Okay, it's seven o'clock. It's seven o'clock, so I'm calling the meeting in order. Let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for being here tonight. We're kind of, this has been awhile since we've had a ZBA meeting, so we're gonna kinda go over, uh, let Beth, our zoning administrator, uh, go over what the normal rules are, and I will kinda cover a little bit of additional information. Do you wanna talk, Beth, or what?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, so, just note, um, please, during public comment, you will be limited to three minutes, um, which is standard, we don't have sanity, you will be actually, um...
Okay, we're gonna take a quick roll call. Lee Abernathy, I'm here. Anita Manley?
Anita Manley here.
Chuck?
Here.
Okay, Chuck is here, so we have a full, full, uh, ZBA meeting here right now. The first order of business is the last meeting we had. Um, I've handed everybody the minutes from that last many, meeting, and I just need a, if you had a chance to read it, I want everybody to, uh, or need a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was, uh, two twenty-four, twenty-one, I think it was the date, wasn't it?
Two-four.
Two-four. Yeah, two-four, twenty-one. So, Chuck, can I get a motion to...
I still move.
Anita, will you second it?
I second that.
Okay, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion is passed to accept a minute. Last meeting. Okay, um, the next piece of business that we have to take care of is, uh, if you can hear me, can everybody hear me, okay?
Yes.
Okay. Next thing we have to take care of is, we have to do, um, some business as to, uh, the, um, the chair, vice-chair, and secretary for this thing, and set up the meeting schedule for the upcoming dates. Um, right now, I'm Lee Abernathy, I'm the chair of the, um, ZBA, Chuck is the vice-chair, and, um, um, our secretary was the, uh, was the, uh, the first person from the planning commission, uh, Dave, it was Dave Mark, Dave, yeah, it was Dave. So, Dave has moved on to other things. Um, so, um, I am certainly not, I'm certainly not in love with this job, but I think we need to elect a, a, um, uh, chair, vice-chair, and, uh, secretary, so...
I nominate Lee Abernathy to be the chair.
Second.
Okay. Huh? Okay. Chuck?
I approve.
Yes.
I approve as well. Okay, now, vice-chair, I nominate Chuck to be vice-chair.
Second.
Okay.
I approve.
Okay, I approve.
Approve.
Okay. Now, he's a secretary job, but you get lots of help with the secretary job, okay?
Okay.
Okay, Beth will help, and I will certainly help as well.
All in favor?
Huh? All in favor of Anita being the secretary? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, it is roll call. Chuck?
Here.
Yeah, I approve of Anita being the secretary. Do you approve?
I approve.
Okay, good. Okay, um, first, first order of business is public comments. Um, what we're asking, like Beth said, is, is three minutes, we know that this is a, or at least I presume this is, uh, an interesting topic. Um, um, I am gonna allow you a little bit of leeway. I, I, I'm asking you if you're, if you're just repeating what the person in front of you say, said, and just say, you know, I agree with what he or she said, I, I disapprove or approve of what's going to happen, if you're talking about the motion, uh, the, the thing we're dealing with tonight. So, if you would like to come up and speak, what I'd like for you to do is to come up to this microphone here, and put your face close to the microphone, so the people in back can hear you, and the recording can hear exactly what you say. So, there are people who have signed up to talk in the open portion of this meeting. If we think, the board here thinks, that we need to hear from somebody during the close session, we will certainly call on you. And, um, I'm not against doing that at all. Anybody who's been to a ZBA meeting know that I will call on you, and we'll have further discussions. Yeah, Chuck, so...
The public comment right now is non-public hearing comment.
Non-public.
Any...
Anything.
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 The public, the public comment, um, for the hearing is during, once we open the hearing.
Once we open the hearing. Oh, yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Just general comments.
Cause we have to ask you.
Okay, we'll have to. Okay, but anybody wanna talk about something general, as far as the ZBA goes? You don't like the way you're, we cut our hair, you don't like the shirts we're wearing, please feel free. Going once? Going twice? Okay, no public comments, no general public comments. Okay, we're gonna call to order the public hearing for a dimensional variance by owner of David Hudson, applicant is Midwest V LLC, parcel number eight zero zero six five eight zero six oh six zero zero. And the address is five three eight oh eight, County Road three eighty-eight, Grand Junction, Michigan. So, you wanna start off, Beth?
I can't. Okay, so before you, you have an application...
Pull that microphone over there, so that we can, no, that one's not working, I don't know how that one works. Just pull it over as close as you can.
Before you have an application for a dimensional variance, again, submitted by Midwest V LLC, it is for a gross square footage variance, which our ordinance states, section four thirteen, special use conditions are small-scale commercial uses, three subsection B of the Columbia Township zoning ordinance. Section requires the total gross floor area shall not exceed five thousand square feet for all commercial buildings on the property, and Midwest is requesting a commercial variance for a total gross floor area of ten thousand six hundred and forty square feet. All application, um, the site drawing with setback information and included request of variance of this submitted and are complete. It, uh, it does not conform with the ordinance as written, which is why we are here.
Edit.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Um, I presume we're gonna hear from, um, um, Mr. Yeah.
Hudson.
Hudson. Mr. Hudson, or is there representatives here? Are you Mr. Hudson?
No, I'm, I'm from Midwest.
Okay. Fine. Please use the microphone, if you don't mind, and please talk loudly into it, so that we can record it, and that everybody in the room can hear you, okay?
Garrett Dvorsny, Midwest V LLC. Um, I think Beth did a good job summarizing while we're here, requesting a variance for the square footage of a proposed, uh, retail establishment, general retail, um, commercial use. I think looking at the ordinance and surrounding area, um, we along Mr. Hudson, um, feel this is the best use of the property, from my understanding, the property's been vacant for some time. Um, looking to redevelop that piece of property into, um, something that can be used by the community, and, um, from my understanding, the precedent has been set for variances of this nature with other buildings around the community, so, um, really just here to answer any questions the, the ZBA may have.
See, may I have any questions at this time?
Yeah, can you identify some of the other buildings that are exceeding?
I believe the Family Dollar right up the road is exceeding the, the five thousand square feet, which would be a, a very similar situation.
Any others?
Um, that was the one that stuck out to me, just looking at use and size, um, very similar to what, what we'd be proposing, and very similar size.
This is not going to be a, a retail outlet, I, I assume?
It, it is going to be.
This is going to be retail. What, what kind of products are you gonna be selling?
Um, general retail, food products, household goods, um...
If I'm not mistaken, this is very, very similar to the Dollar General that's here, right? Or, uh, I can never keep this thing straight, the one that's already in town, it's very similar, right?
It would be a very similar concept, yes, with a variety of different products.
Okay.
So, where, where is it? Is it the old schoolhouse?
That's the property, yes.
They're gonna tear it down?
Correct.
Why can't they make the building work?
Excuse me?
The building that's there, why, what's, what's wrong with it?
It's a two-story building, and it's, it's outdated, it would not be cost-effective for, for what we feel is the best use of the property at this point.
Is the property, uh, large enough to build a second structure next to the school?
Um, I, I, I'm sure it would be, depending on, but not for, not for what we have planned, or what would, we would be proposing. I think in, in working with Mr. Hudson, who's the owner of the property, this is what we're proposing.
Okay, I'm, I'm sure we'll have more questions as we go through here.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, we'll call, call, we will call back on you. Um, I would like, if anybody else has input on this, please, I'm open to that. Come on, come on up, come up, state your name, address, and, uh, try to do it as succinctly as possible, your, uh, for, against, and why.
I'm very, very, very much against.
Could you state your name and...
Elizabeth Andry, I live on fifty-first and a half street, I am third-generation Grand Junction resident, um, I moved back to this town so that my children could go to Grand Junction School. Grand Junction School is, see, I wish I had known more about this ahead of time, I just found out about this yesterday, so I don't have any time to prepare anything that is, like, very relevant, except for, Grand Junction School, the building itself, is our community. There, dollar stores come and go, and then they leave an ugly spot in the town. We have a school building that has been there for, in three years, it'll be a hundred years, and it was even there long before that, but it, that was this, it was built again there, it was from a different location. I wrote a whole paper on this twenty years ago, I wish I could remember where I found it, where I had it, but, the school building itself is Grand Junction. Without that iconic piece of memorabilia and building, there's nothing to separate our town from any other. We have people that have come back, just like me, that feel the same, about how, we were devastated when they actually closed the building, we moved back here so that our children could go to this school, you know, and then unfortunately, it didn't happen to stay going, they closed it down, uh, a year after they did major renovations on it. They put thousands and thousands of dollars in there to put a wheelchair ramp in there, and a lift on there, and the very next year, they closed it. Then, the town board had it all zoned, so that it was basically unusable for anybody that actually wanted to use it. They want, John and Sarah wanted to make that a community center, I wanted to be an art teacher in that community center, a lot of townsfolk wanted to participate in that, and the town denied them. Anything that has been vital and actually useful for this town, for that building, has not been allowed. If you take that, you allow them to make us another generic town with this building that we don't need, we do not need another general store, we've got one that barely functions and doesn't do well anyway, why are we gonna uglify our town by letting another one in? We don't need it.
You know, if that building can't be occupied...
I'm not sure, um, I'm sure that if we had it deemed a historical site, which I'm sure we could do, because in three years, literally, it will be there a hundred years, that exact building. There would be funds, I mean, there's a lot of ways to go about it, it wouldn't be easy, but, I mean, if you allowed it to be a different use, like, like, uh, I don't know anybody that wants to do it, but if someone was to make it into, like, a restaurant, or a brewery, or something like that, that would have been beautiful. But, you know, that's not happening right now.
Okay.
I'm just at a loss. I'm sorry, I, I wish I had prepared.
No, it's all right, you're, you're fine, and, and we appreciate your passion, and we, we really do appreciate your input, okay?
And I'm not the only one that feels that this is the identity of our town, it really is, there are no other buildings in our town that are this old, it is one of the, you know, it's Grand Junction.
What happened to the community center idea?
It was shut down by the board. It wasn't, um, school wasn't zoned for community use or anything, at that time, it was...
Your board?
Not this board, it was years before, you guys.
Yeah.
It was the town board. They wanted it to be residential, when we wanted to use it for public use, but they wouldn't. And they denied all of the, whatever anybody tried to use for it, for public use, so...
No address on, on, in the paper of where it was. So, uh, it led to speculation of what it might be, that's, but I, I think it would've been helpful with more information. Uh, my second point is, Family Dollar is struggling, they're doing a wonderful job, though, and I can't see that we would be able to support another retail store as that. I just don't think there's room in town, one goes, one leaves, you know, and then the third point is, the school itself, at one point, I also heard that it was gonna be used for the community, I don't know why it was shut down, I don't wanna see it torn down, I'm tired of seeing old buildings torn down to make new room for new modern things, and I'm not saying that we don't need any more commercial in town, I think we do, but I think the building could be bet, put to a better use, other than just tearing it down and putting another store in, that's gonna compete with the gas station, and with Family Dollar, and then the other, all the stores go out of business. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Go ahead, feel free, come, come on up.
Hi, my name's Lisa Hudson, I live on fifty-second and a half, um, I am for it, although I don't mean any disrespect to those who feel sentimental about the building, I grew up in Holland, Holland was small when I grew up, in the eighties and nineties, and I remember some years back, going back in there, or out there to see my mom, going past my old elementary school that was tore down, and it was heartbreaking, you know, I kinda grew up in there, and to me, it was like, well, why would they do that? She's like, nobody was doing anything with it, Lisa, it was falling apart. And she said, they could've, would've, should've, nobody did. The community, if a community can't hold up a Family Dollar, who's gonna pay for, just the upkeep of the, the school, to make it a community center? It would be a great idea, sure, to make a, you know, farmer's market, or any other type of store, including a general store, because that's paid for. If we make it a community center, the community has to pay for it. Then what, the property taxes go up, grocery taxes go up, any, all taxes go up in our area? Another general store is gonna be competition for Family Dollar. You go in there now, and it's, what, five, six dollars for a gallon of milk? I've been a nanny for six kids, that was one-day use. Six dollars a day just for milk is outrageous. Competition for Family Dollar brings down the prices, 'cause they'll be competing with each other for our hard-earned money. David bought the building with the intent of doing something more than just selling it to a general-type store, you know, a laundry mat in the gym, maybe a couple little stores inside the school itself. Well, look at our water out here. To get the water in the condition to be able to use for something like that, costs far more than what anything's worth in this town, not to disrespect the town. I moved here intentionally, I didn't grow up here, I like it here. I think another store out here will help our community grow. Houses are being sold, younger families are coming in, Family Dollar brought jobs, I know at least two of the girls are in walking distance of the store. You know, there was a lot of years, I didn't drive, and there was nothing in town that had any jobs, and I was walking to South Haven. When you're late for work enough times, they'd let you go. Another store out here brings, what, probably ten, twenty jobs, that our community could use, to really boost everything, especially with the younger generation starting to grow up. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Leon Wilson, zero four one seven three, Huron Street.
I'm sorry, what was your first and last?
Leon.
Leon.
Wilson. Um, I moved up here in, uh, two thousand fourteen to Grand Junction, moved to Michigan in eighty-nine. Uh, my father used to bring kids back and forth to Grand Junction, and pick them up from school here, but the school's been closed down for like thirty-two years, and it hasn't did any revenue for Grand Junction, it's just been sitting there. And the thing is, in order to progress, in order to progress, we gotta start from somewhere. And the thing is, even though we have a Family Dollar, I go to Family Dollar, I go to Dollar General, you know, I shop at both of them, if one don't have it, the other one might have it. So, I do go, I look at it as a growth for Grand Junction, that pretty soon, you're gonna get business, you're gonna get people coming through, and then, you're gonna have other entrepreneurs looking to build something here. You even have people to come, that wanna purchase land here. So, Grand Junction will start growing and getting on the map. And the thing is, is that I don't just, uh, disagree with their opinion, you know, I know it's a historical building, and that, and a lot of people look at it like that, but it's a lot of historical buildings that's been, in a lot of places, that have been tore down, and new things have came up, and they have proceeded, and they have progressed. So, the thing is, is that if individuals doesn't agree with the individual, then they should find a way to come together, purchase, to build it back from them, and then they can have it the way they wanna have it, you know, if they purchase it back from them, you know, but if they just won't have to tell him what to do with his money, or what he can't do with his money, then that's not logical, you know, so, I just look at it, I'm for it, you know, and I'm for the progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Leon.
Hi, my name's Tina Salinas, and my address is zero four one three zero Van Baron Street.
Okay, there you go.
Um, I moved here to Grand Junction from Detroit, September twenty-ninth, two thousand, lived in five three eight eight nine County Road three eighty-eight, up until four years ago, and then I moved over. My kids went to that school in two thousand, and in two thousand and one, and the school, two thousand and one, they shut it down, and sent off four of my kids to Bloomingdale. So, since two thousand and one, that has not brung money in, for Grand Junction whatsoever. Yes, it's a beautiful school, yes, they spent way too much money on it, but I am for him selling his property, it is his property. You know, nobody can say, you cannot sell your property and make a profit. It's not brung no money in, like I said, for here, so why should it just keep sitting empty? Let him do what he wants with it, it's his property, he bought it. If everybody else, that's so gung-ho about wanting the property, why can't whoever wants it, all get together and buy it back from him? Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. Are you bringing something new?
Yeah.
Okay.
People have all made very valid points, about that they wanna bring money into the town, or whatever, with a new, fresh life for the property and the building, but our town already has one store, I mean, it doesn't need two, you can look at, like, Bangor and other towns that have had two stores, they don't stay open. Only one of them manages to stay open, and then the other one is shut down, and then you have a big ugly spot in town, wherever that building was. We do not need two general stores, our town just won't sustain it, it's just not gonna happen, and not gonna do well. There are much better uses for that school in the future, you know, if he, nobody's saying that he has to do exactly what anybody says, or doesn't have to do what anybody says. It is his property, yes, but do we have to let him use it for what he wants to? He can come up with a different idea, or he can sell it himself, because, you know, you buy a historic place that's iconic, you kinda wanna, you know, take care of it, I, I don't know, I'm just...
Okay.
I don't think we can sustain two stores, and we're gonna be left with the ugly spot in town when one of them fails, and that's the oldest building in the whole town, it's the only thing that's our town.
Okay, thank you again. There must be others. Sure.
Um, when he purchased it, it wasn't, ever said anything about, it's historical, take care of it. It was, it was gonna be a residence, it was gonna be our own little mini mansion, but we got a better offer somewhere else, so, want it? Okay, cool, bye. So, he's still trying to bring more life to the community. If we keep it as a school, yeah, it is pretty, it really is, the inside isn't. You know, the people that David bought it from were in the middle of construction. They had, uh, an environmental inspection, I mean, I don't know anything about what came back, but maybe that was why it was declined before by the committee, as far as a community center, was possible asbestos, or lead in the paint, things like that. Could've, would've, should've been used for something else, but who's paying for that? You know, Mr. Hudson has been retired four different times, he's ready for the fifth and final, or twelfth and final, probably. So, selling it to somebody that can make use of it, is what he's always done, he's always bought things, brought it to life, and then left it to somebody, or sold it to somebody, that can continue the life in it. There's nobody that wants to buy it, to preserve it, 'cause it's, it's a lot of work, it's a lot of work. I mean, it's not just cutting the grass, it's paying the taxes, it's paying the utilities, it's paying for, you know, a security alarm on it, for vandalism, and the phone that you have to have used to use a security system, and, and the wages for the police officers to have to come by, 'cause a teenager got mad and threw a rock through a window and tripped the alarm. It's, it's not free to just have it as something historic. When we leave something historic, is when it becomes a money pit. And that's definitely not something this community needs. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm giving everybody, come on, Dixie, come on here, that's all, you get up. Will you identify yourself?
I'm Dixie Kovach, four six five one nine twenty-fourth Avenue. Um, I'm looking at this from a business sense, um, there's already one, um, Family Dollar, whatever, is, is in town, and this would be competition. Um, look at Bangor, when the two went kitty-corner from each other, one of them closed. Um, if someone else had mentioned today, it's going to impact your other businesses in town. Right now, you have a gas station in town, let's say that business closes, then you won't even have a gas station, you'll have, um, two of the same type of businesses. Um, the other thing, too, is that it's in basically a residential area, there's houses on all sides of it. A building that's twice the size of, of the zoning for it, is over a hundred percent, and that is very, very large for that area, and there's no hardship here. Not saying that Mr. Hudson couldn't use that for a commercial use in the future, um, maybe it needs to just have a different type of business, as opposed to some business that competes with an already existing business within the township.
Thank you, Dixie. Okay, don't worry, anybody else? Give everybody a chance. Yeah, Mr. Hudson? Take your time, no rush.
Okay. Hello, everybody? David Hudson here. The mic, I could not hear most of what was being said, because it's, folks were not talking into the mic, they were standing back. I do have, um, some disagreements, um, if my memory can hold up and, and serve me right, um, uh, let me start with, um, the, uh, first person that came up, the first lady that came up, and she had, what she had to say, and I only heard part of it, but I caught the gist of where she was going with it, and talked about her family, or her children, or how long she's been, um, in, in Grand Junction, and so on and so forth. Well, I'm a transplant, but I have been, um, Grand Junction loyalist for over forty years, I've paid property tax here. I've paid property tax here. After I retired, I became permanent resident, uh, and I had a summer home to begin with, about three years. And when I retired, three years later, I was permanently here all year round. I did what I had to do to make my family comfortable. And I'd like to say that I understand the folks that, uh, don't own a business, and their feelings, and their, um, their mood swing, I would say, uh, concerning change is difficult to do change. When I retired from my job, it was change, but I endured it. And I would like to say that during a comparison, or a correlation, we have South Haven the way it is today, I mean, it's huge, it's growing, and it's growing, it's growing, and it, it, it's growing every two minutes. And it didn't start with just leaving just one store, or one gas station. South Haven has about nine gas stations, uh, throughout. It has more than just one, um, convenience store. Folks complained when, and petitioned when Myers was trying to come in. Uh, Family Dollar, uh, not Family Dollar, but, um, the, um, um, give me a second, I haven't seen your moment. Um, the, um, where the car wash is, uh, uh, down there on, um...
Pink Bee's, where it's, it's Pink Bee's now.
Right, any, anyway, that place there, they petitioned, I mean, they petitioned like crazy, they went deep pockets trying to block, uh, uh, Myers from coming in. Myers came in. And even when Walmart was coming in, and when Walmart started, it was a, a, a study that they went to Kalamazoo, sent a survey team around all the parking lots, taking, uh, license plates, where do these people live? They live back this way. That's how we ended up with, um, uh, Walmart coming to our area. Well, let me narrow this story down a little bit. My store, which was, uh, Unique Pickle Liquor, was closed for quite a while. McKinder was there forever, and some folks, you folks might know McKinder, uh, I'm, never saw him, but I met his sons, when he, he sold his store, and after he sold that store, eventually, whatever happened, it shut down. So all we had was a restaurant and a gas station. And we had, uh, Conroy was bait shop, but that did not serve food, or other than fishing license and things like that. That's the only commerce we had here. Eventually, when I, I got a hold of the store, it was closed for over six years. I went deep pockets to bring it up to code, up to speed, to get it open. The moment I started, the gas station started digging into their pocket and extended a back room of their store to block me from coming ahead. Nothing was said about that, but that's what they did to block me from opening up a store that had been there way before, or just as long as the gas station. So, the, I survived. Then Dollar, Dollar Store came in, that put a pinch in on me, too, as well, far as digging and getting products that I didn't sell, or I did sell, but they're gonna cut me. I survived, and I'm still here with them. So I'm saying all of that to say this, this, this school, it was other folks ahead of me. Um, when Bloomingdale, um, closed the school down, they closed it down, and they closed it down for economic reasons. And when they did that, they sent everyone over to Bloomingdale. I imagine there had to be folks fussing and making havoc over, uh, all our school, but the good folks at Grand Junction could do nothing about it, it was out of their hands, it came from a higher power. That they had to do it in the name of, uh, the good of the community. Well, that store, the school stayed closed, um, for quite a while, maybe twenty-two, twenty-three years. We had one attempt of a buyer who bought it from the Board of Education, he bought it for a really nominal price. His taxes stayed at that nominal price. That person sold that store to someone that wanted to make, um, a mansion out of it, I'll use that phrase, they wanted to make a three, five-bedroom mansion out of it. He had a, another offer made to him, double his salary, move his entire household, he took the bait, here I come. I moved in to try and do something with it, and the thoughts that I had, uh, in addition, and each time, the cost went up. The guy that bought it from the, the gas station, uh, seller, it went up. When I bought it from him, it went up. I'm not gonna make any money off of it, if, I might get my money back, if, if it's approved. And, but I wanted to do some good for the community. And my first thought was to put a gym, not a gym, but, uh, a laundromat in the gym. That was my first thought. If that didn't fly, my second thought was, see if I could go with, uh, uh, a grant from the government to put senior citizen housing in around there, which would've been i- ideal, uh, for the community. I will be eighty-five this year. I lost my wife in twenty-twenty, so my cause and purpose, I, I don't have that right arm that you have when you lose your mate. Thirty-four years I had this lady in my life. So it's like, it's time to fold, and maybe I might get some, uh, lifestyle after the fact, you know, if, if this thing is successful. I get it sold, I don't have any more, uh, issues, uh, over me. Right now, I'm married to my business, I'm there every day, seven days a week, and I never complain, I'm always there. But anyway, like I said, I had competition come against me when I weathered my storm. Well, same thing'll happen here, if, if a new store comes to Grand Junction, it will make Family Dollar either lower their prices a little bit, it might make the gas station lower his prices a little bit. The community benefits from that. They compete against each other. Anywhere there's a Burger King, there's a McDonald's. Where there's a, a McDonald's, there's a Burger King. So that's not a new thing. And same thing with Dollar General, uh, and Family Dollar, they are each other's, uh, rival. If one goes, the other one says, well, hey, wait a minute, that's gonna be something for the future. So I'm gonna say to you folks here, hopefully, that you see that I'm trying to do some good for the community, not to hurt anyone's feelings, or mess with their, um, um, nostalgia of, of, um, you know, all the years that they share with, with, with the bricks over there. My, my, uh, mother-in-law, I'm gonna share this, and I'm gonna get off, off your mic, um, back in Homewood, they were gonna tear down the, the, the school. Everybody in Homewood that went to Homewood School, they put the bricks on auction, and trust me, they covered enough money, um, to, to give back into that community, because folks, uh, bidding on just having a piece of their past. And the same thing here, folks can come and have a piece of their past, and, but Bloomingdale, um, township, not township, but the, uh, the school board, they saw a vision to let it go. And, uh, they, they're bigger than me in thought, you know, because it's, it's a board, and, and you have your, 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 uh, folks that's been on the board, that designed to, or been voted in to think in behalf of the community. So that's what I'm asking for, for you folks to think in behalf, what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to do something for the community, and I know it's gonna be a pinch for anybody that, if you guys agree, uh, and, uh, see that I'm trying to make some progress, not, not, uh, do harm to, uh, our citizenry. I thank you for letting me, uh, overtalk, and thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, folks, too.
I am, I hope everybody is noticing the fact that, that we have not enforced the three-minute rule. We know how emotional this is. Um, okay, Lonnie, you wanna come up and say something, or no?
Art Johnson, five three, five five three, County Road three eighty-eight. I've been at the township for eighty-three years, and I think this meeting is about changing the urges, and I think we should not change it.
Change, change what?
From five thousand to ten thousand.
Oh, okay.
I think we should not change that.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Lonnie. Do you have something new?
Wait, she has, she has had her hand raised a couple times.
Oh, yes, please, I'm sorry.
Hey, my name's Amber DeVoe, I live at zero eight seven three five West Shore Drive, um...
Get as close as you can to the mic, we can adjust if you want, 'cause like Mr. Hamster said, you can't hear.
Oh, no, he wants to hear what I have to say. Anyway, so I live over on Silver Lake, and, um, what's supposed to change? I mean, what's supposed to more? Family Dollar was closed for two and a half weeks to cash only. You look around this community, who's paying cash only? I bet you not fifty percent of our community is not paying cash only. We rely on food stamps, we rely on government help, we rely on the community. Right out here, we hold a food drive, okay? If our community didn't need it, they can go to Bangor, they can go to, you know, um, Pullman. Our community needs the help, and so our community has the help here. So what is the fact of bringing more jobs? Bringing more diversity, not only in like people, but food? Like, what if I want some Hispanic food? Where am I gonna go? Right? What if I wanna make me some fried rice? Where am I gonna go? Family Dollar don't got nothing. A Hispanic family is not shopping at Family Dollar for their Hispanic food, okay? We are making everybody a white community, a white community, and we are not a white community, okay? We are a community of poverty, we're a community of diversity, we're a community of many different needs, okay? I tell you what, if he puts a, if someone could put a laundromat over here in this, I bet you, I, I mean, do you have rugs in your house? Are you gonna wash them, right, in, in your, in your washing machine at home? No, you're not going to, right? That's the stuff you take to a laundromat, you put that stuff in someone else's dirty laundry, right? My dog beds, stuff like that, you don't wash at home. Where are you going, South Haven, Bangor? Where are you bringing your money? Not to Grand Junction. Grand Junction needs money, it needs jobs, it needs diversity, okay? And not just working at Family Dollar where there's one person, there's one person there, okay? For majority of the shifts, one, okay? Imagine if we could bring three or four more stores into that school to bring, I don't know, three or four more jobs, or maybe thirteen, twenty, fifty, who knows? It sits there empty. What does it do for our community besides be an eye sore? If no one's mowing it, if Mr. Hudson's here is not mowing it, he's not paying to mow it, who's gonna mow it? I'm not gonna mow it, are you gonna mow it? None of you guys are gonna mow it? Are you all gonna chip in fifteen, twenty dollars a week to have it mowed? No! We're not going to, it's gonna become an eye sore, it's gonna become a jungle of a mess. Why not bring something that can help our community? I'm sorry if you guys think it's all historic and everything, and it's, it's, that's fantastic, but who can tell you if your house is blue, you can't sell it, right? You own a blue house, you own a blue house, it can't be sold. You gotta paint it purple in order to sell it in this house, or in this community. Who's to say what you can and cannot benefit, right? You paint your house, you put on siding, you put on a metal roof to benefit your home, for what? Resale, right? Resale. You don't do it for while you're living there, right? The roof's great, but if you didn't care about resale, you just put on another shingled roof. If you care about resale, you care about the long term of something, we will use you guys' all of your houses, you put money into it for return. Mr. Hudson's done the same thing, if he wants to put money in this for return, not for his own pocket, because like he says, he wants to retire, he wants to be done. It's for everybody else in this community to benefit from, okay? Because my house is not blue, I don't want any of you guys to tell me that I can't sell it, and that my house is not worth something that can benefit this community. Think of these food drives, okay? I, I guarantee, one of you guys sit out here, when the food drive comes, okay? You sit here, and you look at the people that show up, okay? We're not showing up wearing our Jordans, wearing our, you know, brand-new jeans and everything, we're showing up because we need the food, we need the help. And if I can walk from my home to my job, okay? Think of how many people I can benefit. Think of how many fifteen, sixteen, fourteen-year-olds can get a job at a laundromat, sweeping, wiping things down. It's not just for the people who are grown adults. We can teach our younger generations to work, and not to sit there and want handouts. Get a job, you can walk from your house, four blocks down the road, half a mile, a mile, and go to work. Lisa said she walked to South Haven, and I can, I can vouch for that, she has walked to South Haven so many times to go to work, when maybe because she just lives right up over here on the road, she could walk to school and show up for work on time, because it doesn't take her three hours.
Can I just ask a quick question? Are you for or against?
I think that anything that brings this town life, that's what this town needs. It's his property, he should be able to...
No, no, I understand what you said there, but, but I'm asking you directly.
I, I am for him selling this and letting him do what he wants with it, letting the next person take their vision.
'Cause for a while, it sounded like you were against it.
No, no, take, take your vision, take your vision, do something with this community, because nobody else is. Nobody else is. You see homes up here that just sit abandoned. How many people walk away from these homes and just leave, because there's nothing here?
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Um, this is your last time, okay? Last time, very quick.
Can you jump into the mic, because I can't hardly hear you, and there's a lot of stuff that I don't want to hear.
Okay, sir? Sir?
Yeah.
Your Pickle Liquor survived because it sold liquor, and there were no other stores in town that sold liquor.
Okay.
So that's different, that's different. I'm just saying, that we don't really need two of the same exact thing in the town with a different name. One's gonna end up closed.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Oh, good care. Okay, I know this is gonna be an emotional meeting, and I, I hope everybody's having the fortitude to listen to everybody, because I think it's very, very important. This is an important subject, I want everybody to be heard. Good care.
I'm Karen Gross, and actually, I wouldn't have even known about this meeting if I hadn't subscribed to being able to get notices through the website. I didn't realize that that's what this meeting was for when we wandered in. I didn't realize that that's what this meeting was for when we wandered in. I can totally understand both sides of this. This town needs some progress, but if you look around here, the only historical building we have is the school. I don't know the timeline of this planning, uh, but I'd like to think there's a way to have both, that there could at least be a facade that is saved or something. Um, I could be wrong. I think an owner is allowed to tear something down, uh, with just a demolition permit, which this wouldn't be the board to get that, I don't think. But there's a reason why there is a Board of Appeals process, and it is things like this. Asking for double the square footage is not an automatic okay. That, that is actually why a variance is required. So, if there is a way, I don't know the timing, like I said, I haven't seen any drawings. If there's a way to have your cake and eat it too, uh, that's what I would be in favor of. But as it stands right now, maybe having more time so that more people would know about this and have input is my only comment.
You put, Jeff?
My name's Kathy Curtis, and, uh, I live on Saddle Lake. And I'm here to approve this being done. I mean, I hate seeing the school torn down, but at the same time, too many times, people have come into this township and tried to do something that was good for this township, I think. And different people and different situations has made it awful for them to try to get these jobs done. I would like to see him be able to put in another store. If it brings a little bit of competition, I don't see that as a bad thing. But I do see it as such progress that possibly puts tax dollars into the township that it's not getting now, because you have a school sitting down there dead. And even though people in the past have tried to do something with that school, other people in this town just made it awful for them to be able to do it. And awful's just a bare word for me to say for what was done to them. So, I'm here to say I approve, and I hope that this board will give him the variance.
Giving everybody a chance.
I'd like to just come, more, more...
Okay. I've set a precedent, but this is, we're done with, we're done with the repeats now, okay? But come on, let's try it.
I appreciate that comment which she just made, and it was direct and it was, uh, sincere. I just wanna say that, um, in, in respects to the lady that's come up here about three or four times, three or four times, the reason you're sure survive, you had liquor. I have credentials, that's impeccable. I could not have received a liquor license if I did not have impeccable credentials. They do not give, the liquor license folks do not give license to someone that's not worthy. And like I said, uh, I pledge myself, and I've worked hard. And if we talk about, I've been there, what, thirteen years now? I have not missed a day, not one day. And it saddens me that folks that I have served and been, uh, uh, a merchant too, have that narrow vision, and like this lady just left here, God bless her, she said exactly what was needed and direct to the board, and I appreciate it. I do appreciate that, and that's what we need here. Folks, um, willing to do, uh, what's needed to make this a, a growing town. And the last thing I'm gonna say, let's look at Breezeville. One post office and a weed shop. That's the only commerce they have. And before I opened up Unique Pickle Liquor, all we had was a bait shop seasonal, the restaurant, which closed like eleven o'clock in the morning, twelve o'clock, uh, and folks didn't have no place to eat, and we had the gas station. That was it. Uh, so anyway, uh, I hope you folks taking consideration, and all the folks that's, um, sentimental to the school, I would be sentimental too, and I paid taxes like crazy for that school and this community, and all my kids are older than me. Thank you, folks.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna, yeah, oh, this is a new person. I think we're about two people shy of everybody, right?
Hi, my name is Mercedes Martinez. Um, I live at zero three seven two four Van Buren Street. I literally live across the street from the school. Um, I've lived there about five years, and I've, I moved to Grand Junction because, um, I saw it starting to grow after Family Dollar was here. I actually didn't even know about Grand Junction, living in Pullman. So, um, I think I'm for having another store in town, um, being, uh, I was a Dollar General manager for six years, and I've seen the competition, especially with Family, Family Dollar, and it helps both, it benefits both. What Family Dollar doesn't have, Dollar General will. Or I've been in there multiple times where things are out of stock constantly. Having another store in town would benefit the community instead of having to go all the way to South Haven, or to Bangor, or to Pullman. It, I think it benefits this little area around here, and it'll put us more on the map. Um, comparison to Pullman, they only have that one Dollar General, and it's, it's struggling a lot. But I bet if they had a competition with another store, it would benefit both. And Pullman's getting more on the map. I mean, it's, even though it just has the Dollar General, has the gas stations, they're growing. They're having their little community area there. Everything's growing, so I feel like having a little extra competition here will help grow. And it also, you know, benefits the people around us, like they were saying about jobs. I literally live across the street, and I have three kids, and having a job right across the street, it would be perfect, coming from just one vehicle house, household, you know? So, and like I said, I've been there for five years, and I haven't seen anything, anybody try to do anything. So if somebody's willing to try to put something in there, I think we should just give them a shot.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut it off there. Uh, I think we've heard just about every, every public comment. Um, just for the rest of the board and the rest of the folks out here, everybody, all the board members have a copy of the petition that was circulated within the community. I counted the names, there are a hundred and, uh, a hundred and thirteen names on here. I, I have no way of verifying that these are legitimate names from people in the community. I assume that they are. I will, I will assume that they are. And, uh, they are, that are against granting this variance. Uh, as far as I know, the next thing we gotta do is close the public square portion. Is it no? What else we gotta do?
Um, I'm gonna read over the finding of fact.
Okay.
We need to completely go through that.
Okay, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move this microphone to, because we'll be talking up here. I want you to speak into the microphone so everybody can hear everything you're saying.
Thank you. All right.
If you can't, if you cannot hear somebody talking, please, please let me know, okay?
Okay, before we go through this, I just wanna first and foremost, um, say to you guys again, we're here for the variance, um, and I ask that your thoughts be with the, either granting or not granting of the additional square footage, instead of the use. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and just read through this, and I will ask some questions through here, and it's kinda like a roll call vote. The application is a request for a variance from section four thirteen, special use conditions, R., small-scale commercial uses, three subsection B. of the Columbia Township zoning ordinance, which section requires the total gross floor area shall not exceed five thousand square feet for all commercial buildings on the property. The applicant proposes a gross floor area of ten thousand six hundred and forty square feet. The property address is five three eight zero eight, County Road three eight eight, Grand Junction, Michigan four nine zero five six, and is located within Columbia Township. Tax parcel eight zero zero six, five eight zero six zero six zero zero. The property is Zoned R. One Residential District with Grand Junction Commercial Overlay. The property is currently developed with multi-story brick structure, history of mixed uses. The applicant proposes to do the following on site as part of their proposed use. Demolish existing structure, construct a ten thousand six hundred and forty square foot commercial structure. So a variance from the terms of the ordinance shall not be granted by the ZBA unless and until a written, written application for a variance is submitted demonstrating, one, that these special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, land use, structure, or building in the same zoning district, so as to present such a unique situation that a precedent will not be established for other properties in the district, to also ask the same or similar change through the zoning appeal procedure. Yes, sir. This is a yes or a no. Anita?
Wait a minute, hang on a second. I thought that, I thought that the board had a, a discussion period before, before we get into this vote.
Before we, before you do your final vote, yes.
Before we do the final vote?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
So does a special, does a special condition or circumstance exist which is peculiar to the land, land use, structure, or building in the same zoning district, so as to present such a unique situation that a precedent will not be established for other properties in the district, to also ask the same or similar change through the zoning appeal proc, or procedure? Yes or no?
Yes, I say yes.
Is there a peculiar land use, structure, or building?
Chuck says there is.
Yep.
I do not, I do not know what that is. Being peculiar to that, I don't see anything there that's peculiar.
To their request? I'm, I'm not, I'm not clear on the question. What is peculiar, the, their request?
Meaning, is there something with that parcel that would prohibit them from building within the confines of the ordinance? Is there something special, such as topography, a...
So there is...
Body of water, a...
Okay.
It's a characteristic of the land that is specific to that parcel?
That would prevent something?
That would prohibit them, correct.
No.
Now, now that you restate that, I, I would, I would say no. After you've explained it, thank you.
And just for everybody listening there, I, I know it's kind of wordy, but we have to go straight out of the State of Michigan zoning enabling act, so the verbiage has to be what it is.
And I, and I know it's hard to read. I, I read these questions all the time when, when we're dealing with this, and they are difficult to deal with. They're written by lawyers, and we're gonna do our very best to understand them completely, okay? I'll try to reiterate what I think is going on here in layman's terms, okay?
Number two, that literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district under the provisions of this ordinance.
You're asking first.
So does this, yes or no? But does this ordinance, the, the five thousand square foot, deprive the owner of his right to do on his property what he so wishes?
Yeah. Cause he wants to build a rigor building. He wants ten thousand square feet, and we're saying, and the ordinance says five.
So that's the first part of it. The second part of it is commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zoning district.
Again, are you taking a roll call right now?
I'm just...
Okay.
I'm answering the question before we do that.
Okay, okay. Does everybody understand what she's asking us? In other words, is, are we, are we saying that something that David would like to do is unique in the David situation here, so that nobody else could do this but David? Am I correct in that statement? Or not?
It's not about the use, it's the square footage.
The square footage, okay. If you're asking me, the answer, the answer is no. This, anybody else, the current, the current rules does not prevent him or anyone else from using that property in a way that they would like. Yes.
Should I offer some of that?
Go ahead.
I think that the answer should be yes, so he's trying to do something larger, and the precedent has been set with a similar building, a similar guy.
We have, we have to go back and look, we went back and asked, I asked that question. We can't use a precedent for this particular, for this particular ask. In other words, because somebody did it two years ago, or ten years ago, or fifteen years ago, we can't use that.
Right, but would it be denying this situation of liberty that others have been doing? I don't know the specific wording, so I'm butchering that. But the second half of the question would be...
Would deprive the applicant of...
It's an R. One with a commercial overlay, so I know what you're trying to ask, but that's, that's not what it's referring to. It's referring to, is that five thousand square foot that's written into the ordinance, is that going to prohibit a permitted use of residential, of your small-scale commercial within the confines of the ordinance? So that's what the question is asking.
Hey, hold on. Okay.
Is that a question, is that a reading to my situations? That's a reading to another, uh...
It's a reading, no, it's a reading to this particular variance.
To the entire...
To this particular variance. We're looking at the overall community, and we're asking the question, does this variance affect, is it being affected by the, by the other people in the community, okay? And have you, are you getting some kinda special treatment? I think...
The body of water?
That'll be the...
No, that was in the previous question.
That's just an example.
That's, that language was changed to something else?
It was just an example.
Yeah.
She was just giving an example.
Are we answering these questions just to give the group a sense of where we're going?
No, you're answering so I can write them down.
Okay.
This is not a group.
But we have a vote.
Because we, okay, let's, let's just take a five, a five-minute adjournment for people who wanna use the bathroom, okay? We're gonna adjourn the meeting for five minutes, okay? Okay? We're working on it. If you, if anybody wants to use the bathroom for five minutes, then we'll start again, okay?
We cannot hold any discussion during that time.
Okay.
I just wanna...
But we can, we can read.
Yeah, we can read, can't we?
Grab a glass of water. Do you need anything more than that?
Oh. I brought one left in the car. I didn't think we were gonna be here this long.
That's the one I would probably do.
Thank you.
So if we say yes to the question, that would be towards granting it for us? If we say yes to each other's questions?
Yes would be towards, correct.
It's towards granting it?
On this one, yes.
Okay, everybody's back in the room and it's been five minutes. So we're gonna rejoin the meeting here. Let me read this second sentence, second question that we're dealing with here again to you. Just cause it's clear in my mind, and I apologize. Says that little interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance, which means the request for ten thousand, the normal ordinance is that you can only build a five thousand square foot building. That's the normal ordinance. If we, it says in here, the little interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under provisions of this ordinance. So that's saying that we will be giving Mr. Hanson the ability to go to ten thousand square feet by commonly, commonly, other people within the district. In my opinion, the answer is no.
Anita?
No.
Chuck?
No.
Okay, the third one, I'll read it to you and I'll see if we can help make this as clear as we can. That granting of the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by the provisions of this ordinance to other lands, structures, or buildings in the same district. That granting of the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privileges that is denied by the provisions of this ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same zoning district.
I think no.
I think to know on that one too.
Yes.
The fourth one is that no conforming use of other lands, structures, or buildings in the same zoning districts, such your discussion about the previous Dollar General down here. And not permitted on the use of the land, structure, or buildings in other zoning districts shall be considered grounds for the issuance of a variance. So we can't consider that other Dollar General in saying, they got it, so we should give it to Mr. Hanson.
So we're on four. Lee?
To me, again, I'm trying to phrase this so that it's understandable. So I can't consider anything else, so the answer is a no on that one. Okay.
Anita?
No.
Chuck?
No.
So the land is approximately two acres. What is the, what is the square acreage?
One point six acres.
One point six acres. So it's not interfering with any other properties that are in town.
It's, that's not relevant to what?
That's not what the question is.
No. It really boils down to the square footage of the building. It's in a residential area and you're asking for a variance to double the size of any building in that residential area. That's what it boils down to.
Right, but that particular plot is zone commercial.
No.
Yes, I'm paying commercial taxes on it.
It's an R one district with a Grand Junction commercial overlay.
Because the person that I purchased it from went to the board and was asking for it to be zoned residential and they said no until you complete its plan that it would come back to the board for consideration to get a change in zoning. But that land is commercial. And I'm paying commercial taxes on it.
I'm not sure that's relevant to what you're asking for. In that whether it's zoned, commercial, or residential, you're still, you're asking for a variance on the size of the building. And that's what's before the board, is the variance for the size of the building. Whether or not, whatever the zoning overlay is on it, to me is unrelated to the variance you're asking for. What you're asking for is doubling the size of a building that's allowed in that area. That's what you're asking. And that's the reason for the four questions. To find out whether there's something unique associated with your request that we should allow that. And I can't talk to anybody who, what anybody else did prior to us being on the board and sitting here listening to you. I mean? Is there anything else we gotta cover in the public meeting part?
Only if you want to have discussion between the three of you.
Well, I would like to have. I would like to have a discussion between the three of us. So what we're gonna do right now is we're gonna close the public meeting and, but that doesn't mean anybody has to leave. The board is gonna sit here and discuss this request and how we're gonna come back to, when we come back, we're gonna vote on whether or not we're gonna approve or disapprove the variance. Does everybody understand that?
Right.
No?
Are you talking about a closed session?
Yeah, it's a closed session, they can stay in here if they want.
You're just closing the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. It just wasn't?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Closed session, okay? Do I need a motion for that?
Not closed session.
He's closing the public hearing.
They're closing the public hearing so that we can go into discussion, okay? Now, the board members and you included Beth, I'm gonna ask you to use the microphone here cause it's really easy to start talking amongst ourselves and people can't hear the discussion. I've sat here all night for the last hour, going on an hour and a half right now, listening to this and believe me when I say that I could stand here and I could argue both sides of this thing with everybody in this room. I, this is a miserable situation to me. And I understand everybody's point of view. And I'll be real honest with you, I wish I didn't have to sit up here and do this one. I really don't wish to. If you, as the board, I'm gonna sit here and tell you right now, after everything I've heard, I can't think of any reason why I would vote yes to allow the variance to go through. I understand everything Mr. Hanson said and I agree with everything he said. I agree with everybody who came up here and supported him. And I agree with it. And I think, I can't think of anything worse than to sit there and say, you can't do what you wanna do with your property. I hate that. But at the same time, I think this is the rules that were provided to us. I didn't make the rules. All I'm doing is looking at the rules. And poor, I like your idea about the laundromat. I like your idea about doing something else up. And man, I hate to see the school go, but at the same time, I'll be real downright honest with you, I don't wanna pay taxes to keep the school up. You may love that building and you may want that building to stay there, but when it comes time to who's gonna pay for it, it's gonna be a tough decision then. And the more tax money we can get into this township, the more I'm for it. Absolutely for that. Absolutely for that. But, well, this is a closed session of the board.
We're not allowed to have discussions.
If we decide we wanna ask you some more questions, Mr. Hanson, we will, okay? I'm talking into your microphone so that you can hear what my thoughts are on the whole thing. I don't know about you Chuck or?
So are we allowed to ask? I have questions about?
Sure, you have questions. You have questions you wanna ask?
I have questions.
Who do you wanna ask?
Of them.
Any questions? Make sure it comes through me. I'll ask the question of whoever you'd like to ask and you address me, but answer. So who would you like to ask?
Where does Midwest Five come into this? So, Mr. Hudson owns the property?
Yeah.
Are you buying it from him?
We have a purchase agreement in place to buy the property from him to?
If this gets approved?
Correct.
Okay. So the information that we got says, "The proposed store will provide customers with a variety of fresh produce, household goods, and other fresh and frozen food options." That sounds like a grocery store to me. So is it a grocery store or a Dollar General? Cause you've described it as a general store, direct competition with the store that's here, but this description makes it sound like a grocery store.
It is, we're proposing it to be a Dollar General.
Like the franchise Dollar General, it will be?
Expanded cooler selection. They're working on a newer prototype of expanded coolers that have more options for fresh and frozen food along with open air produce coolers.
Okay.
To provide fresh produce, which is a larger variety than I believe is available.
Okay. Alright.
Do you have a, this prototype store set up anyplace else?
Yeah. Specifically with the ones around here that have been mentioned. I'm not sure if those are a little older. I don't believe those have the produce coolers. Apparently a new thing that they've been wearing out. I believe, I heard the Pullman store reference. That was a ninety-one hundred square foot store. That was done a few years back. This is the ten thousand square foot store with what they call their plus model. It has many more coolers and freezers and that open air produce cooler.
Kinda like a super Dollar General. I had a question.
Sorry. Chuck, you must ask some questions.
What made you, what made them, whoever, decide to pick Grand Junction? That's kind of in the middle of nothing.
It's been on there for a while and meeting with Mr. Hudson honestly and working through the process we're standing is kinda culminated to this point.
Okay. So it's the franchise Dollar General? Is that what you said? I'm sorry. So they're not going to take any type of existing building and turn it into something?
Yeah.
They're always gonna demolish, it's like Mr. Hudson referred to McDonald's. They just come in, demolish, and they have their standards of what they build and that's what they do.
Yeah. Ninety thousand percent.
Yeah. Okay. I'm all for having a store and growing and all of that, but that building that's sitting there doing nothing, I get it. I get it.
Yeah, I understand the concept.
Have you been in it?
Yeah.
Did you go in the basement? Okay. There's a coal furnace down there that's just awesome. The only way it's coming out is to demolish the building.
Yeah, I mean, we've had to speak with some of the environmental companies in there doing their investigation and this is, it's kinda been alluded to, but even just to, I think a lot of people talked about rehabbing that building, but even just to get rid of the building is no small feat from an environmental standpoint. Like this is, what we're proposing is a major investment into Grand Junction. From that property, that tax base, and really impact into this community. It's not something where we're just coming in and, you know, throwing away the building, throwing up and doing, like there is real work that needs to be done. A lot of people talked about rehabbing that building, but even just to demolish that is a real undertaking with environmental contamination.
So has there been an environmental?
Assessment.
Assessment done on it? I mean, there was a family getting ready to move into it.
Yeah, so it's done a phase one.
So how were those people allowed to turn it into a home? Anybody know?
They probably didn't look into it, if I had to guess. I know with commercial property, it's required to do a phase one, but for residential, it's not a requirement for the sale. It's more of a due diligence item on our part to see what we're giving them to and know, I guess, what we're buying. So it would be, again, it's a real thing of effort to hopefully bring some meaningful tax base to the community as well as another store with a variety of products that I don't see offered.
My friend was a teacher at that school. She took me on a tour of it last summer.
And I understand it was a beautiful building and frankly, it probably should be, but from my understanding, the township has the opportunity to purchase it in the past and now Mr. Hudson owns it and we're trying to do something with it, as I said earlier. I believe the precedent has been set and there is an avenue for this to be approved based off of what has been? to be approved based off of what has been done in the Overly district in the past with the Family Dollar and the size of that building.
Oh, yeah, what size is that building? So this building would be bigger, okay. I have no concept of what's 10,000 square feet, okay?
It would be slightly larger than the Family Dollar building, from what I've seen. I don't have the exact dimension.
Yeah, okay, that's-
I was thinking, I saw it, um, in an article, you were thinking of this school in 2018 before the Family Dollar, this school ward is 7,000 square feet of it. Now, I don't know if that includes the basement, but I know it's a building in the city. So really, they're only requesting to add 3,500 square feet.
Chuck, you wanna ask anybody anything?
No, I don't wanna ask anybody anything.
I think we're done with the, the, um, discussion portion of this, so I'm gonna, we have to go back to, go back to the regular meeting, is that what it is?
We're in regular meeting now.
Yes.
You need to vote on it. So, um, we need a motion, what, what do we need a motion to approve?
Motion order.
So we need a motion to approve or deny the request?
I need an adjournment of the public hearing.
Oh, okay. So we're gonna adjourn the public hearing so that we can vote? That's what we need to do, right? Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay.
I move to close-
I second.
-public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. We all agree to that. Okay, now we need to vote on it.
I would ask that, I would ask that you please, um, motion order with a roll call vote to accept the fact finding to public record.
I move to approve the fact finding-
On the public record.
-to the public record.
Thank you.
I'll second it. Okay, roll call?
Roll in favor?
Now we're gonna do a roll call.
Um, Chuck?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, now we need a motion for, so we need a motion to approve or disapprove, or I don't know.
I make a motion that we approve.
The variance.
The variance.
I'll second.
Okay.
Roll call vote, um, Chuck?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Lee?
No.
So, do we use the majority rule, or?
We just have, yeah.
It does.
Majority. I'm very sad to see that building go. I know. Yeah.
Okay, um, do we have anything else in, in the, you know, what we did not do in the, in the opening, what we did not, we set the agenda for the coming year, did we set the second Tuesday of every month if we have business?
No, we didn't set a meeting.
It, you don't need to, though.
Okay. We don't need to.
Because we just have it when we need it, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Better be a pretty building.
Do we need a motion to close the meeting?
So moved. So moved.
Second, second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion moving. Meeting was closed at 8:34. Man, I'm sitting here, and I could, I could've stood up here and argued either way, for either one of us.
Just wanted to tell you guys, we need-
We need to answer these questions.
Well, you did answer the question.
Yes, we did.
You denied it here, and then you approved it, yeah.
Yeah.
But, but, but answers to these questions are not clearly yes and no means one thing or another. All yeses.
So we-
But if we-